Oh, nicely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation unregretted and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Nicole, roll call please.
Commission Chair Kerr.
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Valdez.
Here.
Commissioner Miola.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Adamson.
Here.
Commissioner Wab.
Here.
And she was excused.
Okay. Uh, citizens need one on non-agenda items. Let me know that there's nobody sitting in the audience tonight, so.
Anybody online? Would you normally see him on the screen?
If somebody were online.
Yeah, there would be another problem here.
Somebody is waiting to see a picture or something of them or even a little blank. Okay, well then since there's nobody online at the moment, I'll be listening in. Uh, we'll move on to approval of the April seventeen meeting minutes. Everybody had a chance to read through them?
Yes.
Any comments? Yeah, the only, the only thing that stuck out when I read this last night was, um, before we got to, not the new visit, but the last board's this commission, but we made a motion to approve. Roger voted nay, and I just had the feeling, I just got the feeling that the spirit of why he would have voted nay didn't come across. And for some reason, I felt, you know, to me, there's an importance there because it represents a different opinion. So I don't know.
Yeah, I can include a line in there, just kind of stating your reasoning for nay.
Yeah, and it's mostly the access issue.
Yeah.
Primarily, but yeah, if anybody was.
I was, that was going in and out of it. I wasn't sure.
I think that would be to all of our credit.
Yep.
Because, you know, when there's something like that passion, I think it's want to capture that spirit.
Thank you. The whole paragraph prior to that, there is, is, is covering Roger's, Roger's time. I thought I had to review.
That's, that's, like I say, when, you know, I, I got an impression like, yes, it captured that. He had questions about it, but there was a, there was something about a passionate notion and why he would decide that it was worthwhile to vote consciously. That's all.
I have no objection.
Okay. Then I will get that ready. Okay. Um, okay, looks like we have a work session tonight. So the signs, short and then the art master plan, so, uh, LA twenty four forty signs. Let us ask Jim about that. Uh, and we'll go from there. I got, I think a sentence or two I'll say, but if you cover it, then I won't be saying anything.
So, uh, for several months, we've had four legislative amendments that we've been working through. And we're now finally to the fourth one, which I forget just when, but it was added to our to-do list. Uh, last election season, the city apparently had a complaint about a sign that was a political sign. And when the city went to enforce the regulations we have, then there was an issue about, well, what about this? What about that? And so basically, there's no issue with the city controlling content because we cannot control content. And the language in the code does not control content. It just literally says thirty days before the election and two weeks after. You can have more signage. And as long as that more signage does not exceed, and I forgot what it exactly says.
Eighty square feet. Or the square feet.
Square feet, total thirty three.
Thirty-two square feet, then, you know, go for it. Put up more signs. And so, uh, if you're a businessperson on ninety-nine, I would assume that they would want to put up signs related to their business. And that'd be okay because we don't control content. If they wanted to put up political signs, they could do that too, because we don't control content. But anyway, so the issue over the language was discussed by council. And at least one of the city councillors believes that even though our language doesn't directly control con, our language that allows more signs during election season does not control content. Because it is, the air, the time defined is thirty days before and two weeks after an election. It kind of intimates that maybe the sign has to be a political sign. And that some people that aren't crafty at reading the language might think, oh, yeah, I'm going to put up more signs. It's got to be a political sign, and I don't want to put up a political sign. So they don't take advantage of this extra signage during election season provision. And the other issue is a couple of subsections later in the code. It talks about temporary signs, and there's the size limit and the number on temporary signs. And just by the nature of political signs, they're temporary. And so the temporary sign section and the, the political sign section were not coordinated in terms of how many and what size and things like that. So the, uh, city council decided, yeah, let's just delete subsection L, the election season signage requirement, and that'll take care of it. We'll be back to the way we were before subsection L was amended into the code. I forget how many years ago, ten years ago or something.
So there's going to be trade plank ordinance on signs regardless of season.
Does, does that roll in back to, to section two point two or six point oh eight A, which allows four signs per property, total area of four sites, not to exceed eight feet? So that's it?
Nope, it just eliminates L, which is the election season signage.
Which is the only place where it increased it to thirty-two feet for, thirty-two feet per property room for that period.
Election season, right.
Little, little, little background to this. Uh, when this L was crafted or created, people noted that they had seen election signs scattered throughout the county in various places. And to include within Lafayette, there were a number of people that said, uh, we don't mind having election signs at all. We don't even have a, mind having more election signs. But we would rather not see election signs, a plethora, just left out and all year long. So they tried to, you know, tried to create some language that would allow more signage, knowing that, that the possibility of those signs would be directed towards political because of the time window, but allow some more signage during that time period. And then pulling it back so that again, you could have more signage, express opinion, but then not leave those signs out there with the idea of cluttering up. Unfortunately, it turned out, as Jim said, when you get back towards late last year and it come up that that type of language, one tends to imply, or could be interpreted or misinterpreted to apply only to political signs, even though the language does not go that path, it could be implied that it's political only. Uh, but it also got to the point where, if I remember right, council meeting that sat in on the city attorney said, it may not be something that is, if not legal, not enforceable. So the simple solution is to say, okay, let's take L out so that there is none of this before an election, after election, more signage, no signage, just baseline the standard and leave it at that.
Yeah, so for all the years that the city has had sign code regulations, they had provisions for temporary signs, sandwich boards and different things like that, that typically businesses use or feel that they need and want to display. So, uh, we'll be back to that. And the issue of what does the city do about election season and people wanting to put up political signs? I don't know what the answer will be, but we'll be back to where we were, whatever, ten years ago. And, uh, there are a few cities that have, you know, tried to address these signage, additional signage during election periods. And, uh, they seem to have some language that is very much like what we have in subsection L. And where subsection L came from is Toallerton, where twenty-five or thirty years ago, when I was the planning director there, we adopted that language. Again, because if you don't have, if your local code doesn't allow additional signage during election season and people put up additional signs, then somebody complains and the city goes out and enforces the law and says, we don't care what it says. We're not here about that. We're here about the temporary sign provisions, and you only get whatever of a certain size. And you've got four or five, and so you gotta take, you gotta remove them. Well, most cities are not going to have their enforcement officer go out during election season telling people that they have to remove signs with a political message. And so, um, it's one of those things where the city will deal with it in some way or another. And if the way they deal with it, it's, well, we've put, we have a midterm election. Well, we've got an election right now, but it's off-season or off-term, and there isn't hardly any activity in terms of.
Running for school. Signs out right now.
So anyway, uh, the midterms, not until November twenty-sixth, and then the next presidential election is twenty-eight. So probably not until twenty-eight will the city need to deal with the issue where somebody actually complains. But, uh, depending on what happens in twenty-eight, this issue may come before you again.
And I suppose, you know, the, the, the simple answer, at least at the time, so we all understand, would be if the city, if, if the city says you can have two signs of X size or not larger than X size on your property at any given time, if somebody during political season puts out four signs, the city is going to say, hey, you need to take those two down. It's just, you can have two signs. We don't care what you're saying, but you've got four, so you need to remove two of them. You pick what you want to remove, or you pick what you want to have out there on your allotted two signs and there, then you're, you're playing fair with everybody across the board.
Hey, yeah, there's a lot of political season, political seasons all around. It's not just an election. There could be anything that happens. It could call people to want to express themselves. So I'm, I'm kind of, you know, I'm like, why even just down to a couple of signs? It's like, it's their yard. It's their space to express themselves however they want. So it's like, should we be more focusing on safety, like signs and obstruct the view of the roadway or obstruct the neighbor's view, something more concrete, you know, because people have different property shapes. Some have L-shaped lots, some of them have big lots, some of them have small lots, just saying two signs for everybody, regardless of what kind of property you have. May not make sense in every case, in every time of year. So maybe there's a different way we can approach the standard in terms of instructing view and safety and things like that.
That's what I was trying to, trying to get done with, with Jim, is it, we're rolling back now to a maximum of four signs per property with a, a total area of eight square feet. That's, that's, uh, top of page two. Two point two oh six, point oh eight eight.
That would represent the residential size. Four, four signs per property, totally, of course, extra nice eight square feet.
Yeah, eight square feet, it's not much.
Yeah, and if somebody wants to put up a, you know, four by eight, three, two square foot sheet of plywood type sign during election season, and wherever they put it on their property, they could put up, I don't know, five, six, seven, eight of them. And so that could cause a neighbor to say, oh, come on. Do we have to be like this? This is a residential area.
Thirty-two square feet. He goes out and gets something up tractors and junk on their yard. I mean, people decorate their yard all kinds of ways. I don't like.
Anyway, it's.
Two by eight sheet of plywood. Eight square feet is one, or two by two signs. Yeah, two by four foot. Yeah, that would be eight foot. So, I mean, you know, and then you're talking about something, you know, you're putting it up so somebody can in theory read it from a moving vehicle. So it's like, you know, I, the, the, I think the limitation of eight, eight square feet maximum up to four signs with a total of eight square feet. It kind of, it kind of takes the obstruction of, of, of traffic crews out of those. Yeah, I mean, you can have like a max height. It could be something else. I mean, it's a big apartment complex and they want to put out some four lease signs like, this could, they could show up eight square feet real quick on a multi-family property and don't have any provision for that. Does it change from R one, R two from the signage requirements or anything?
Uh, yeah, residential signs, it's single family duplex, and then single family residential and multifamily. So if you have duplex, you have ones, one, one guy set of guidelines. If you had multifamily, have a different set.
You have a different set of them for multifamily. So we're just talking about the R ones, middle family lots.
Yeah, well, and in this case, yeah, this.
Talking about.
L, which applies to all properties.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, that we got properties, seventy-five square foot up to tens of thousands. I don't know what the biggest lot we have in town is, but.
So all we're doing is taking the L out, which eliminates that, and then it reverts back to what is currently existing in our
Yep.
two, six, oh six, oh eight, oh nine, ten, and eleven, allowing each of them the different zones where they have their own, each of them have their own standards as far as signage at this point.
Within the commercial and industrial, if you have a really big building, a lot of frontage on your property, then you get more signage than if you have just a hole in the wall, little boutique retail store on Main Street here that's real small.
And I know there's a, you know, and I know there's, even amongst us, there's going to be a difference in opinions. As much as I agree with the idea, you know, it's a person's property. They should be able to do what they want. I also understand the perspective of it's a person's property, you have other people and neighbors around you, and like you said, one person's trash is another man's treasure. Some people love getting pulling those. Other people say it's horrible for property value. You know, oh gee, they've got a black cat. Oh, this person has calico. They're indoor, they're indoor, outdoor, you know, but. You know, so, so use of property. So the idea behind all of this, this is, at this, at this point, is it's about striking that balance between allowing some signage that lets expression, but not so much that even, you know, whether you take into account or a safety factor, some other issue, it's, it's about making it so that even if we're totally safe to have five sheets of plywood on the front of your yard because it's big enough. The question is, does one really want that in your community? And the answer is, in some cases, yes, because there are people that will. There are also cases where there are people that won't, so.
What we're dealing.
Trying to strike a balance, but at this point, all we're trying to do tonight is say, hey, we got something in our code that really is unenforceable.
Yep.
So to clean it.
There's a lot of standards and this other kind of one, like painted windows and things. We're dealing with what most people consider to be a sacred constitutional right. So like, I, you wouldn't just to push for something as permissible as possible within the bounds of safety taste. When we're talking about speech, religion, things like that, you know, where it's different than talking about like what kind of window on it they should have or something, or what the look of the community is. So that's my hesitation, where eight square feet signs, like, I mean, obviously taking out the election thing, that makes perfect sense, because like I said, there's all kinds of reasons, political reasons even, that people would want to put more signs up in different parts of the year. That's just what is the standard. And, and you've done a great job in the past of coming up with what other communities have done. So you've talked about like the election season thing, or that what other ways are communities tackling the sign issue other than just limiting it to a couple of signs or something like that? Is there kind of another paradigm we could work off of?
So what we can do tonight, this would be a, it sounds, it sounds like there might be something interesting, at least making a passing glance at the other sections of the sign code in the future. I would say tonight's probably not a good time to do that. If we're going to do something like that, I would say let's look at that again at some point in the future. We can always do that. We can always look at it, make a suggestion to city council. That's fine.
Yeah, we can get it on the agenda, but it's like, is it sufficient for election purposes? If we revert back to the eight square feet, is that sufficient for what most people want? For, like, is it consistent with the other communities in the area? Is eight square feet?
Hey, it's, it's twice what allowed in our subdivision.
Yeah.
For the HOA rules.
ECRs, yeah, of the subdivision. Eliminate, anybody putting up any large sign, it's basically a two by two sign. And then that's, then that's, and it can only be up during political season. And if somebody were, oh, you would tell you to take it down.
Absolutely.
So, Roger mentioned earlier that we have elections all the time, and we really do. Sometimes, you know, uh, like right now with the May, you know, during presidential time, it's primary election date. But in accordance with state law, there's something like six or seven or eight official election dates throughout the year. So if there's going to be a recall, then people can get their signatures, and if they get enough and they're all okay and everything, then they can have an election, I don't know, in like August, another one in September, um, November's the regular one. And I think there's a date in February, March and May. So one of the, uh, people that was commenting when this sub L was added several years ago, they were saying, okay, so there's an election every other month essentially. And so election season can be a long time during the year, and if you get to put up signs, okay. So the language in here is talking about if you have something during the an official election period where the county election office has something to vote on, and it's in your city or affects your city, then that's when you can have additional signage. And so the whole thing, you can just get so bogged down in the details, but it ends up being a great little mental exercise because it, a lot of people think there's only elections every four years. They kind of forget about the midterm election. And then they aren't quite understanding what goes on in May, when you get to vote for some people. And then again, in November, you vote for them again. What's going on there?
You got your, you got your, you got your two main elections that everybody thinks of, but then you got a couple of other little things that come up that all deal with more local.
Yeah, and so if you have a, some local thing, maybe a, uh, a levy or a bond measure in your city, well, then only the people in your city get to vote. Or maybe it's a county thing where only the people in Gambel County would get to vote. Then people in Lafayette would be able to put up more signs during that period. But anyway, it was interesting. And, uh, one of those things where we tried to address as many issues as possible, and that one we were able to address by, okay, if there is a, an election in, uh, Pacmas County, then we wouldn't get extra signage here because there'd be nothing for, there would be no official election in Gambel County or in the city. And so, anyway, um, so the upshot of this is the public hearing will be at your next meeting. And we'll get the notice in the newspaper and things like that. Uh, if this comes back, it probably won't come back until maybe the twenty-eight national election. And depending on what happens and depending on what kind of complaints, if any, the city has to deal with, then, uh, we may get something, and on the other hand, we may not.
So, so it looks like there'll be a city council hearing of this, but that's, it looks like that'll take place the week before power hearing. Is that correct?
Uh, well.
Staff recommendation, staff recommendation.
Did I put a Ron name in there? No, I guess it must be July.
So it'll be, it'll be, this would be after our meeting. So that'd be in July.
Thank you for noting that, Ron.
One thing that's got me thinking here with this complication about the election season and when they could and the possibility of the code enforcers doing a bunch of calls and getting ahead of it. I, it may be out of scope of the code or something, I guess, but can the city put it up on the site like the planning commission's means or burn season or something like a election sign rule? Or in effect, this date, this date or something, so that at least everybody's clear on, oh wait, we're getting.
But it's. So that's, that's.
It would make sense if we, that's, that's the whole purpose is so we don't have to worry about that.
But they, they can put up eight square feet of signing anytime they want, completely. It's all your own back to it.
Does that include, uh, flags, signs?
Oh, I know. The flag pole thing's a whole nother animal.
Well, there's a flag of sign. And some people would say, well, yeah, I need to check it out. I need to look at it because the flag's a flag. But then depending on
which way it handles.
What it looks like.
Of course, it's.
It, well, you can determine.
Yeah, the council has a flag.
I think that's what has come up before. I determined the answer was, we don't know. There is no consensus on that.
Certainly in the last few years, there's been flags, just kind of tacked on to people's walls. And that's the F-bomb Biden flag. So if they have the same message and it's not a piece of plywood nailed to their house, okay, that's a sign. But if it's a piece of cloth, it's kind of hanging so that you can read it most of the time, then, oh, well, that's more like a flag. Well, nobody's going to enforce, well, nobody did enforce the one up here on fifth or sixth or whatever, whatever that was. And I think that was a cloth. A cloth material rather than a plywood material with the message on it.
I think at our C C N R's, there's, there's separate definitions for flags versus.
There is.
Versus, you know, the science flag is, is. And they say specifically.
Yeah.
When you put a U S flag up on those pole sizes too, because when I see it hit the headlines, it's usually a veteran getting harassed by a city or homeowners association that makes national headlines.
Yeah. So.
So thanks for the correction, Ron. The last line, it says, uh, a city council public hearing is anticipated but not yet scheduled on June twelfth, which was a week before your very on the nineteenth.
It's like, no, no, for you, it's comfortable, first person.
Yeah, the intent is, uh, July ten, second Thursday in July at the regular council meeting. I just haven't double-checked that that's a good meeting for this Wiki item that would be a public hearing for the council.
Yep.
Sometimes several councillors, let the city manager know way ahead of time that they can't make a meeting, and then if he gets like two or three people saying, I can't make July ten, then he'd say, uh, no, Jim, we may have a quorum problem on July ten. Let's notice it for August, whatever, the second Thursday in August, yes.
Well, then I will make a, hey, let's do this. I will make a I will make a, hey, let's do this. I will make a. Motion that we strike paragraph L. Section. Two dot two oh six dot oh six. Of the. L Z D O. Sign code. That is a recommendation to city council.
And we wouldn't need to do that until your hearing on the nineteenth. And once you have your. Here and heard from the people and all that stuff, then you would pass a motion making your recommendation.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so is this markup version without the L, what's gonna be presented then during the public hearing? I guess where I'm getting confused because we're still talking about.
Okay, well, we would propose the public, the public would get this showing that, you know.
Yes, without going.
And the strikeout and so that they would see that that's what's being removed. Yes.
Because this is such a limited amendment, uh, your staff report for your June nineteen public hearing will look quite a bit like this.
Pretty much about the same.
Just one other note, I saw the June nineteenth hearing, that's Juneteenth, it's a federal holiday now. Are we gonna hold the hearing on?
That is a federal holiday.
The nineteenth, that's right.
Now, actually, Oregon recognizes that as well.
Well, it's a holiday.
Yeah, it is a federal holiday, but some. Somehow. I don't know. In some ways you can end up not giving your employees a federal holiday off. Usually Fourth of July and things like that. I know there's not a lot of people that work on those holidays. And a whole lot more that work on, for example, Martin Luther King Day. But.
Well, it's a state holiday, so you're, you're actually an employee, so are you off on the nineteenth?
That's a great question, but I don't know.
I suggest you find out. I know last year, not only did Oregon recognize, but Oregon State, all state offices closed.
I'm like, I would say I'm seventy-five percent sure that we have it off. I assumed we did, but now I have doubts.
Yeah, the council of government has it off. I don't know why it didn't ring a bell with me other than. I've been on a national holiday.
Long enough. That means if we're going to do that next month, we would then have to move it to our next alternate, which would be the fourth Thursday. So that's nineteen.
The fourth Thursday would be June twenty-sixth.
Yeah, move to June twenty, our meeting to the twenty-sixth.
So I don't know, maybe let's just, if you have any advance calendaring in your brain or in your phone. Would that fourth Thursday in June, the twenty-sixth be a. Good day for you?
I'm pretty sure. I'm gone all of June, so it does not, it will not affect me.
Can you take me with you?
So yeah, I do have a vacation planned, Crater Lake that day, but you know, duty calls, duty calls.
Well, how about Wednesday, the eighteenth?
Wednesday, the eighteenth, I'm good.
I will still be gone.
You're, you're, you're gone for a month.
Gone for a month?
Yeah.
If it's for work, you're getting paid, so that's okay.
It's done for work.
And you're still gonna have fun.
I've paid a lot of money for it.
Then enjoy it.
I'll call you. I'm available on your vacation soon, so you can. We have the technology.
Where are you going? Spain, so Spain.
Plus seven or plus eight.
If Spain is the same as the UK, it'd be plus eight.
Depends on time. So yeah, yeah, I guess UTC minus seven.
So you could be sitting at a table eating.
Yeah, yeah, that's dinner time.
That is dinner time, right? That's true. It's a possibility.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not planning to get the, the cellular plan, so I'll have to be on Wi-Fi. So seven.
Really?
That would be about.
Well, anyway.
Yeah, late.
We'll find the alternate date and see how that works.
So we were proposing the eighteenth then?
Well, I don't know.
If, if the nineteenth, they're, they're off.
Yeah, I'm sure they're off. The comic is off.
Yeah.
I don't have to take it off. I can go ahead and work on the nineteenth.
Yeah, then, yeah.
Eighteenth, that sounds like eighteenth is a good alternate day, just to confirm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have a quorum.
Okay.
We need to make a motion to change the date or then the agenda somewhere where we set the next.
No, the city would post, and I'm not sure what the state law says about an alternate date or a planning commission meeting. I know if it's a city council meeting, they have to give some kind of advance notice that the council's meeting on this day rather than that day.
Well, it's the fifteenth, so we've got a couple of days left to meet a thirty day window, if that's what it is.
Just. And what?
Can you check with Brandon?
Yeah, I'll talk to Brandon tomorrow.
And maybe, yeah, then we may be outside of that.
So on part, for instance, that one day, that make a difference.
Who knows? This all might be delayed an entire month to July because. The next thing on our agenda is just, you know, letting you know, here's the chapter five. Essentially final version. And I was gonna mention to you that that hearing will be at your June meeting. Obviously, it won't be on the nineteenth, so.
Okay.
If we can find a, I don't know, maybe are you out all that last week or just?
Yeah, the twenty-sixth, I'm up twenty-sixth through the twenty-ninth, but like I said, I can zoom in.
The Wednesday or Tuesday of that last week.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I'm free the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, definitely.
So anyway, we'll find out what's going on and.
And then like I said, if we have to do it on the twenty-sixth, I'll make it work.
Yeah, yeah, no point. Crater Lake.
Yeah.
Crater Lake. Is that, is that one of the nights where you'd be on the west rim?
Yeah.
In a full moon rise.
Apparently that's something, not a good, would not be a good thing to bother you at that point.
Yeah, so anyway.
Do what we gotta do.
I think we got the first item on there, the first work session item taken care of.
Yes. Okay, the next work session item is the park master plan. It sounds like you have the markup. It's complete.
Well, what I brought tonight, I do have a markup, but what I brought tonight is the clean version. And I forget if it was the markup or the clean version that I sent to Nicole, that she sent out to you folks.
She said that's what we got.
Yeah, I sent one out, saved the clean copy.
And so anyway. As I was going to say, that the hearing for the park plan amendments will be at your June meeting. But it probably won't be, I have pretty confidence saying it won't be on the nineteenth, your regular June meeting date. But I can check with Nicole and. Brandon, cause I don't know if whatever other groups might be in here. And if we don't check it and set up a date, then the one time that some Boy Scout troop. Beats here as a civic government badge deal, that'll be the thing that we're trying to hold a public hearing.
Just have to incorporate it.
So anyway, we'll let you know.
Okay.
I'm guessing if we have a public, if it has to have a public hearing, we're gonna have to make sure we give them thirty day notice.
Yeah, the code, the development code requires that when you're amending the development code or the comp plan, you have to put a newspaper notice out. And because those kinds of amendments are almost, not always, but almost always legislative. We don't have to notify people within a hundred feet of a property because the property essentially is the whole city. So. Anyway. All the usual procedures will be followed.
Eddie.
So that's basically all I had to say about this chapter five that was sent out to you, just kind of keeping you up to date as things happen. But remember, we have chapter two with the socioeconomic information, so that'll be part of the amendment. Chapter five. And then I still need to, with Brandon, resolve the chapter six, that's the dollars and cents. About how much each of these things would cost and then kind of total for each park and then total for all the parks. And then throw it in at the end, money to buy a bigger park. You know, we'll try to keep it under ten million.
There's a, there's a forty acre site up on. Uh, it's a Dunn.
Oh, Dunaway?
Right on, right on the corner there, that old. It's a, it would be a really fun fixer upper.
Oh, in the corner there.
Yeah, but it's a forty acre site right there around that corner. And it would, it would tie into what you're looking for and make up improvements up that way.
Yep, yeah, it's one of the areas we looked at.
One point, eight-five million dollars is their asking price, which is way overpriced.
Yeah.
Excellent, yeah. We can tell them they're way overpriced. We'll go for.
I'm a professional. We're going at seventy thousand.
Yeah, I'll, go ahead and make sure I recuse myself of any conversation that's involved in that property. I'm talking about potentially going with neighbors and purchasing it, so. And it's. Speak to anything.
It's up Dunaway?
It's up Dunaway, yeah.
It's on the bay.
Dunaway makes a, makes a right turn.
Yes.
It's time to see.
Yeah, there's two ninety degree turns and then you go up and yeah.
It's not, it's not in the city.
No, it is not.
It's well outside the city limits.
County, well, yeah, it ends before the graveyard and it's well past that. Yeah, absolutely.
Boy, forty acres, that's high, that's pretty high value. Is it treed?
What's that? No, it's, it's under agricultural development and it's got, it's just got a house on it that, you know, has been turned down, fallen down. It's gonna be, it's probably gonna be a tear down, but you know, but as priced as it is, yeah, it's a forty acre agricultural lot with thousands on it, so I mean.
Pretty high for egg land.
You should see where the vineyard owner's selling his N four next door to me.
It's a little different.
And it's, it's, it's forward past the lake?
Yeah.
Yes. Before our ABC foundation.
Before we move on to commissioner comments. I don't see a. Agenda item that fits this, but as a follow up to our last meeting where we were discussing for a long time. And then got to the point of having a motion and then we didn't have a specific, any discussion on the motion. And there were a couple of comments about Robert's rules of order, so I looked at those. And. They can, they really can get into detailed stuff. Trying to be general with my paraphrasing of what was said. But even if you've had a long discussion before. Once the motion's made, it's not until that time when the people know what the motion is. And so you have to ask for a discussion of the motion. And then if nobody wants to discuss it because they've already been discussing in the motion. Is consistent with all the prior discussion and it's not, you know, surprising anybody, then. Nobody would say anything, no discussion, and the chair would say, let's move on to a vote.
So you could then have, let's call it general discussion. Motion that makes it focused.
Discussion.
Focus discussion. If there's anything that comes up.
Motion in a second, isn't there?
And then, once that. Focused discussion is done, then you can modify that motion that you made. However, tweak it. So you get your final motion and then approval.
Well, yeah, and the initial discussion can be general and or focused. And once the motion is made, the discussion about the motion and its particular words can be general or focused. And you know, yes, you have to have a second to start the discussion. And then if there's a friendly amendment, then the motion could be changed. To fit whatever discussion is occurring about the motion. And if the motion person is friendly to that, say, yep, okay, I think you have to have the second agree that, yep. And so then the motion could be changed.
So the motion couldn't really, the mo, it sounds like in the motion itself, instead of like we've traditionally done it, put the motion at the very end. Which can still, that still, would still happen, but you could also have a motion at the beginning. That kind of opens that discussion. Everybody knows, hey, we're gonna. We're making a motion and this is what we're going to be, and Linda, this is what we're going to be discussing, reviewing and doing, something along those lines.
I think that's what Jim was saying, we have this general discussion, then make motion second and then. Focus in on that and, and then any amendments of that.
Yeah, I guess that you're honing in.
Now you're holding it, exactly.
If you start the overall discussion with a motion, that kind of. Makes some people feel as though, oh, this is a done deal. And so typically motions aren't made at the very beginning because not until you've discussed the issue and all the sub issues. Would everybody get a good understanding of what's going on and how they might want to vote. And so you always have a staff report. You always have a staff report with a recommendation. And typically, if it's, you know, amend, language amendments. Then you see in your staff report what all the proposed changes are. And somebody might say, yeah, it's all great. I move that we. Recommend to the city council, all the changes as shown in the staff report. Or it's not uncommon that maybe as you were going through all that stuff, somebody said, yeah, what about on page forty-seven, item ninety-five? Instead of amending the language to say X, let's amend it to say X plus one. And so a few of those could happen and by the time you get done with the discussion. Okay, we've got three or four little fixes and the motioner would say, I move, we pass it, we. Approve a motion recommending that the city council approve all of these changes except. The four that we've talked about already, and those four are one, two, three and four. And then the chair says, is there a second? Somebody says, second?
Yep.
And then you can discuss, and if you're sick and tired of discussing and everybody's squared away, ready to vote. Then there would be no discussion and the chair would say, okay, looks like we're ready for a vote and ask call for the vote.
Okay.
Now you think that, that's important to restate the motion with all the information in before the vote, so that everybody's clear on what the change is incorporated into the new motion. It's clear.
Yeah.
Jim, this, this. In chapter five, that's going to go before the. City council, city council, or do we have a hearing for next month or do we have?
For any amendment to the language of the development code. Or to the language of the comp plan. Or to the development code map, the zone map. Or to the comp plan map. Planning commission has to hold a hearing first. And the planning commission doesn't have the authority to be the decision maker on any of those four items. So you make a recommendation to the city council.
We hold our, we hold our hearing so that if there is input that shows up at that point in time. And we do decide or do need to tweak it a little bit, that might adjust a little bit what we make to the recommendation to the council. And when we make that recommendation to the council, they're the ones that will make the.
Right.
Decision.
So this chapter five.
The council then would hold a duly noticed public hearing. And part of the staff report says what the planning commission recommendation is. And they would, you know, somebody that testified at the planning commission could show up at the council and have the same testimony. Just to make sure that they get their way. Even if they got their way with you folks and you were recommending that there be a slight change to reflect the testimony of a citizen. That citizen might say, okay, great, the planning commission's recommending this. That's what the council will do. Another citizen would say, now, I know this process. I've gotta go to both hearings, testify twice to make sure that. What's recommended by the planning commission that's favorable to me is what the city council agrees with and actually does. So anyway, you hold a hearing, make a recommendation to council, they hold a hearing and make the decision.
Oh, this, this chapter five will go to our, our next meeting is a public hearing. And then it will go to the city council in July.
Yeah, depending on which day, I mean, if we get a planning commission hearing in June. Then it could go to the council on their second Thursday. Then it could go to the council on their second Thursday of the month with, which is July tenth. And on the other hand, if we can't get a meeting squared away from the commission in June. Then your hearing will be on the third Thursday in July. And then the council hearing would be their second Thursday in August. Just keep pushing things out.
And then, yeah, so here's another piece of this comment that I wanted to address to you, like after my no vote on here for the parks plan. We talked outside about me potentially going to council and letting them know about why that was, so I did that last month. I had emailed Brandon, um, on the day of and just said, you know, explain that, you know, I voted no. I wanted to talk to the council and wanted to know if they wanted to put it on the agenda or have me do it during the public comment. He told me that I can present it at the public forum since it's a personal statement, it should not mention it's reflective of the planning commission as a whole, which was fine. I showed up and gave it and there was lots of question about sort of like, am I a planning commissioner? And the mayor responded and basically, here was my, uh, let me get the, her follow-up here. Follow-up to public comment, so she sent it to my personal email, that's my first objection, like I definitely like made, made it clear. And they asked, like, I'm not here speaking for the planning commission, the planning commission did not ask me to be here, but. I am speaking to an official action, I took on the commission and that's why I'm here, I'm just a random private citizen here. And then that gets into like, how does this work for us? Because if I wanna talk to the city council about something, and this is the second time it came up during the Dunaway Trail too. That I was told to come during public comment, just like an average citizen, which is fine, I don't, I'm not picky about when I talk or having the three minutes is fine. You know, but it's, uh, this question of. I'm here inappropriately speaking as a commissioner when I'm here in private comment and then emailing me, not on my government email. But on my personal email, so I went ahead and forwarded the email to my government email because we were clear. That, you know, if you do public business with your personal email, then they, you open it up, you know, so it's people coming in. So this is kind of a matter that affects all of us here because we got these government emails for a reason. So that we can do all of our government communication in a place that people can FOIA if they want and get access to. And it's outside of our personal emails, but then if I wanna go comment on something that we're doing here. Then I have to now worry that like this is gonna get mixed up, my personal communication.
Careful of.
Yeah.
Making sure that there's that separation between, I have a personal belief in something, so I can represent that personally, you can represent that. You can still represent your personal thing here. As we have to draw a blank now, once you take that official action, that becomes part of the official action. You go to city council, like you've done, it's like, on the surface, it sounds like there's the appearance of blending, but it's like.
Yeah.
No, it's. My official action was this. That is based upon. The discussion we had, but I'm actually standing before you as an individual. And I want to note, want it on the record, at least on the council record that. I am not here as a representative of the planning commission. I am here representing myself and expressing my opinion.
Yep.
And even after discussion. That opinion was. What drove me to make an official action.
Yep.
But those two are.
But it's not over.
Separate.
We're still holding hearings, so. And now there's been commentary that I've given to the council about an official action that's now resulted in communication to my personal email and back.
Here's where a conflict could possibly be seen is that you is, even as a private citizen, you're a member of the planning commission. Partaking in the debate discussion with what we had. There could be a perception you're going in front of the city council that you're trying to change their mind as.
I, I was asking to have it, you know, if it comes up with the no public access, because there is no pedestrian access. Like there's no sidewalk there and that was the follow-up kinda that I found and runs us into ADA issues. So yes, I was asking them if it comes back up to send it back down to the commission, that's what I want.
And I would to tie in what Steve just said, it'd be like, you'd almost have to say. Anything that comes up from a. You know, what I'm representing is how I came to that decision. It's based on personal experience. That is focused in on a public action, but under no circumstances. Am I trying, will I be trying to change either the planning of the commission's mind or your mind? With regard to that decision or recommendation. I understand that, you know, it's. You know, whatever vote, whatever they present to you as a recommendation. Even if I vote that I disagree with it, I will still support my commission, so.
Yeah, and when this guy gets into what we talked about, and it was the three of us for anybody else who wasn't here.
As a matter, don't bring it up with the city council like that. What I want Nicole to do is capture that reason for dissent. Within the minutes, now that, now the reasoning for your dissent is captured in an official forum. Cause it was already stated in official form, there's no reason to go to city council and present that.
Yeah, and this gets to be the problem, cause you, the three of us, you, Carr, Adamson, put us on here, discussed this after the last meeting. And in light of my no vote, it might be a good idea for me to go talk to them. So if we want to do this in the future, have me go explain it then, should we have a vote for the commission to say?
Keep it in our.
That's at odds with what we talked about after the last meeting, that's why.
And, and just again, because we are now in, in public record and this is conversation, I want to make it very clear.
Yep.
Only conversation. With regard to after the meeting, had nothing to do with. Recommendation, it was just letting you know that. Even as a, as a fellow commissioner, that I. Supported. Your perspective. And that even though that perspective wasn't. The vote you made.
Yep. It's like, we talked about that in that respect, but then we talked about, should I go, you know, give a saving for, and we said that that was probably a good idea.
The minutes are critical, so that's the official record and that's where it will lay out. Your disagreement, you know, and that, that is all the.
That's really all you needed, and that should also. Given that you have been to city council. Those two, those, those events will end up reinforcing each, uh, so.
Cause I mean, there's the minutes and then there's making myself available to the other councillors who may have questions and they have an opportunity during that time to ask.
They have the questions, they could very well come to the planning commission as a whole.
They can't, because we entered into this when the mayor showed up and they can't show up to something that they're in appeal authority to. So after we vote for it, they're gonna get here, so they can't come here and give comments.
Not that they can't show up, it's if they do, they're opening themselves to bias, ex-party contact and.
Yep.
Some of that stuff.
Then I would say going forward, whenever we have, if we do have stuff like that, that comes up again. Make sure that we capture. In this case, it was. We wanna make sure that that gets captured in our minutes, so it's. So it's not only part of, it's part of the record as it is, but it needs to be, and that's why I brought up at the beginning, we need to. Lush down just a little bit more. Out of respect to you, that's what was driving why I recommended it is out of respect to you, but also it might make the record a little bit clearer.
Yeah. You guys hadn't had it before, so it's like, hey, what do we do? Should we talk to them and let them know what was, what the reasoning was? And so, yeah, like, we're kinda getting here, if that's the consensus, like, you know, but I, you know. And it's tough, cause you know, I, I did wanna be able to answer questions, I do have. Concerns about it and I can definitely go and talk, like as a private citizen, but then it's like, you know, yeah, like, I. Worry about then it polluting my personal inbox, I didn't put my email down there or ask anybody to contact me afterward either, period. So it was unsolicited contact to my private email. And then, yeah, I don't want any government business or anything that could be perceived as government business come into my personal email. And I don't think there's any reason that they couldn't have sent it to my government email, I don't think it's out of bounds, but. Anything that has the perception that the public might be thinking that it's due, you know, it's. Part of my action as a government employee needs to be somewhere that they can access it if they decide to, that's not my Gmail account.
Taking care of. Okay.
Things to. I just made a finish on. And we know there's legislative and quasi-judicial. Quasi-judicial is a little more prescriptive. And has the ex-party contact provisions that you have to be aware of. But with planning commission and making recommendations to council. When it's one of those kinds of situations where the council has the decision authority. And you have a hearing here. Let's say it's a legislative item, amendments to the text of the comp plan or the zone code. Or a. Change to the comp plan map or the zone map where there's a bunch of properties involved. Then when you do your hearing and if you maybe have a six-one vote. And the one person feels an obligation, they just wanna let the council know. Kind of, you know, why they voted the way they did. That would be appropriately done at the city council hearing on this case. And then if it's quasi-judicial. I don't know, let's say a zone change or something and another six-one vote. And the one person feels the need to let the council know why they voted on that. And they went to the council as a citizen. Then, under open mic, I guess it would be. Uh, started to explain that, yeah, I'm on the commission, but I'm not here because the commission sent me, I'm not representing the commission. Obviously only no vote and this is why I voted no. Right then, the mayor says, should say, don't say another word, we don't want ex-party contact. Come to our hearing and talk all you want, but not here, not tonight, not about that issue. So I don't know. If the mayor would understand that to be able to say, oh, no, we don't want any ex-party contacts to all seven of us.
At the city council meeting, is the, are you there as the attorney there, every meeting? The city attorney. Wouldn't they? The mayor started to allow it, wouldn't the attorney step in and say, no, you can't?
Yeah, the attorney could, um, I don't know, he intends by assume, doesn't he?
Yeah, as an attendant person, usually Brandon would stop.
So, but, but then for a legislative one, you're saying, then it would be appropriate for me to go as a commissioner to the hearing, no, not at all.
You'd be, you'd be susceptible to bias.
No, you're saying for the, for the quasi-judicial, for a legislative, for a legislative. You were saying that it would be appropriate to go to council when they're acting on.
I don't think it would be, because for a legislative item. If you were the, you know, six to one vote, one no vote or whatever. And you felt the need to let the council know why, then if you went and said. Just like the very next city council meeting. And said, yep, I'm on the council or I'm a commission, but I'm not representing the commission. I'm not, you know, wasn't directed to come here by the commission, but I wanted to tell you why I voted no. Oh, well, right off the bat, you're telling them about business.
Yep.
Planning commission business.
Yep.
So you're not there as a private citizen, strictly, you're there as a planning commissioner. Who wants to explain your vote to the city council on an issue that they are going to hold a hearing about. So that the. Ex-party contact doesn't apply, but if somebody has a whatever, coming from whatever direction. They show up at the city council meeting and they say. I challenge all of you. I don't think you should vote on this. Because you all have been unnecessarily biased by a planning commissioner who appeared to you. On a night where you were not holding a hearing on this issue. And talked under open mic. And said, I'm here as a citizen, but yet everything that he said was related to his activity as a planning commissioner.
That was my concern.
And so then they say, oh yeah, we've gotten biased, we've got a person here who is biased one way or the other. And is trying to. Is trying to appear at open mics and convince the planning of the city council. Rather than appearing at the city council hearing along with everybody else like a normal citizen.
So that's the time to do it then, if we're gonna do it at all. But the recommendation.
So if you have a, an opinion that you want them to know about, appear at their public hearing, just like all the other citizens.
Jim, I try, I think, I think what, what. Trying to say is that we shouldn't be. Going to the city council and talking about what we voted on. Right, that's, that's what we're getting, you go and you go into the city council and expressing your opinion about Terry Park. Without talking about what, what was, what was, or what actions were taken here. I, I think you can, you can freely express your own opinion on. Yeah. But not explaining, not what you're talking about explaining the no vote, like.
Yeah, that should not be part of what goes before the. Before the city council, yeah, but your, your opinion, I guess you have a valuable opinion about what you believe should happen to Terry Park.
Yeah, just trying to figure out where, where we should talk, cause we talked about one thing here. We're different and.
Any action that you take here. Would stay here. Your personal opinion being expressed to the council. Just as that. Is okay, but don't tie personal opinion to. Public action.
Yep, and then when you appear before the council, like to talk about this, you're there because we're, we're, we're asking you as the commission.
Yeah, you may have asked me in the commission to be there.
Cause you were there for like for that marijuana.
And I was asked to actually speak. As a member of the planning, you know, provide, planning commission. Comment to them on that issue. More detail and background and what planning commission think of, that's different.
The difference, yeah, the difference is that you're, you're talking about what was, we discussed, you are, are not.
Not expressing.
Expressing your personal opinion.
Correct. And, and I very much at that point, keeping personal opinion out, unless it's. I talked about this, somebody else talked about this, another perspective is this. Each of them represents, yeah.
So with this, in the future, if we have a dissenting opinion, like just like the Supreme Court case, it's like, why don't we just have an opportunity to submit? Like a summary of that or agree on a summary of that and then just put it explicitly, like here at the bottom, here's the dissenting opinion.
I think that's part of the minutes.
That, yeah, that's part of the minutes.
I think I like that.
Yes.
I like that.
That will take care of.
And that seems like a clean way to deal with all this, that doesn't muddy the water between having me appear at a public comment or whether I'm official. Let's just put a dissenting opinion in the future, hopefully this isn't. And being on the bench commission is, is, is. It's a double-edged sword, because we all have our, our own swivel here.
And it's a matter of knowing how and when to express something. In an official capacity versus expressing something as your own capacity. And that's, that, to me, that's fairly easy to do. And if I do have some doubt as far as which way I need to go. Um, my opinion of that would be, if I have doubt on whether it should go or. To not say anything. Let silence be the.
I mean, you know, I, I, you know, yeah, I mean.
Be the path so that one doesn't create a conflict, so.
Yeah, it's not the silence, right, and I'd just like to know how to communicate about the conflict.
Personal opinion. Under certain settings, professional opinion.
I think what all of us are trying, all of us are trying to do is what, what is best for the city and that's what we have to keep in mind is. Whatever we are talking about deciding in here, it all comes back to, is it what's best for the city? What the city populace is asking for, you know, the limited funds we have, it didn't spend right. That is, that's our whole purpose.
Well, here, we have a deficit of parkland and I feel like a good acre of it. Already deficient parkland is getting lost, so, I mean, you know.
You said something about budget side of that.
We don't, we don't deal with that.
I, we, but it, it does come into play.
Well.
Some of us, some of us make.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of us, some of us want to.
No.
Well, you're right, but I, but I understand.
Yeah.
So maybe it's situational awareness is the most of it, but yeah, we'll make a suggestion or recommendation for such and such, but it'll be up to other parties to.
Yeah, I mean.
Determine how the budget goes.
We could have decided Terry Park would be the, the primary one and, and.
Yeah, our original mission would be to take this first and do the following thing.
Yeah.
But, and those are very broad brush votes, but other than that, we are out of, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we covered that pretty thoroughly in discussion last time. We discussed what we want to do, not how it's going.
Any other commissioner comments? David? Scott? Stephen?
Bobby? Nope. All good here?
All good. Okay, and then again, our next meeting will be June TBD, maybe TBD, July TBD. More to follow, so we won't worry about that. Do I have any motion to?
I'm just trying to think, uh, so we've got these signed amendments. Just, uh, oh my, what, last week, I guess it was, uh, the city had a couple of little vendors popping up.
Oh, yeah.
Announced. And, uh, so it kind of morphed into a discussion of food trucks. And I don't know, a month ago or three weeks ago, there was an inquiry about a food truck going in on a property in the commercial zone. And it's just kind of a gravelly place that's been taken over by grass and some weeds. And they were just going to drive the truck on there and open up their truck and start selling food. And we don't allow, we don't have any regulations for food trucks. And they're not listed as a permitted use in any zone. So, uh, basically we said, even if we were to allow you at the location you might want to go to, you haven't even talked to the owner yet, you've only come and talked to us. And we would think that some pavement and place for your customers to park and your walk-in people for ADA access, you'd need some kind of a sidewalk and you need trash receptacles and this and that and the other thing. And so, I, I don't know, I guess we've not heard back from them. But, uh, Brandon and I were talking and I think in some time here in the last couple of years since he's been here, he's had somebody else ask about food trucks. And so, uh, we thought, well, yeah, maybe this is the time to have some food truck amendments for the development code. And I did mention to him that I'm doing that for another one of the cities. It's not a city that uses us for regular month-to-month planning, but, uh, they're big enough and they've got their own planner, but that person's overworked. And so they came to the cog and said, can you do us, you know, some research and let us know what other cities do? So I ended up using some prior research by another of the cog planters and added a seven or eight cities to the list. And so we've, I told Brandon, yeah, I've got a long table, matrix for the, I don't know, fifteen or twenty cities listed and all the different things that you could be concerned about and maybe have regulations about and what each of those cities does about those issues. So I think maybe that helped him decide that, yeah, let's take a shot at having some food truck regulations. So it's legislative amendment twenty-five oh one. And we haven't really done anything with it, we haven't scheduled it for you folks to look at anything other than tonight, just to let you know.
Something, something's potentially coming, here's what.
It's percolating and, uh, we'll get it to you when we can. But just so you know, the, the one kind of at the west end of downtown was a regular food truck person. The, uh, red tail espresso pop-up was a lady that makes blankets. And I love the term, apparently crochets or knits uses yarn to create animals. So they're called yarnables because they're made out of yarn. I just, that struck me so unique. Anyway, and then the other was a, one of these little frozen cart, uh, insulated carts pushed by hand, I think.
The, the icy ship standing there.
Well, it apparently was at the gas station.
Okay.
And they were selling frozen fruit things.
Yep, yeah.
And it was there. And so, uh, certainly the property owners and the vendors knew way in advance that they were going to be at those locations for just a few hours on a given Saturday. But we, the city, didn't know anything about it, so it was a pop-up. I don't know where, they're there, they're selling stuff. And so, uh, it turns out that, and this has come up before, we don't have a temporary sales provision in the development code. We have a temporary use, but it's actually talking about residential places and allowing someone to bring a trailer or an RV onto their residential property and set up for a period of time. And I forget what the period of time that it's allowed, it's like a couple of weeks or something. But, uh, I guess the idea mainly is related to the health of someone in the house and kind of a hardship help out kind of a deal. So that temporary use doesn't fit a little, uh, frozen food cart that's pushed by hand. It doesn't help a blanket yarnable sales event. It doesn't help someone setting up with rugs, you know, painted, Elvis painted on whatever kind of velvet or something.
Yeah, definitely heard of these before with festivals, like they have, and the food vendors have to get these temporary food permits. And then, yeah, separate, whether they're selling food or whether selling something else, because if they're selling food, then they need to have a health certificate to serve safe.
Yeah, if you're handling food, I guess you have to have a food handler's permit. And you hope that somebody that might be, you know, selling frozen fruit items has the hand, food handlers permit. But anyway, so I think, uh, what we'll do is try to kill a couple of birds with one stone and get some regulations so someone can come in and retail stuff on a weekend or in the evenings, in the summer, from a commercial property in town. And then separately from that, have the food truck thing. And whether it's a food truck or a food trailer or whatever.
Food cart.
Yeah, food cart, then those would be regulated and we would officially allow them and they could come in and show us that they, you know, have, they own the truck or they're renting it or something and they have a driver's license and then they have a, uh, food truck permit approved, you know, inspected and approved by the Amville County Health Department and trash receptacles and all the other stuff that goes with it. I don't know that I'm going to suggest to Brandon that we go so far as to have food pod regulations because a food pod is kind of a different critter that really needs to go through site development review because they're going to have people going in and out all the time. Every unit that's set up isn't going to be moving around, it's going to be there for presumably years. The food pod developer is very likely not a person that operates a food truck. They're a different kind of a. An agent, their element of.
Food truck corral in, in, in Newburgh.
Well, yeah, it's, they.
The Finston area where the trucks.
Get bulldozers in there and they grade things out. They have a, an official sewer hookup for every space. They have official water for every space. They have power for every space. And then the operator of the pod leases space to different food trucks and they select which kinds of food they want in their pod. And so.
Hillsborough has a building as well, like an indoor area with seating.
Yeah, there's a few where.
They're, they're really fairly successful.
Yeah.
Beaverton's got, got two of them. The other thing I would bring up too is like, we just talked again about reviving the Lafayette community market. And that was one of the things we talked about for Commons Park was potentially a pavilion and then allowing vendors. So if we're doing a temporary food permitting system and vendor permitting system with my help support.
Yeah. A lot of times cities for those kinds of citywide events, they let the city council review everything and all of the normal regulations are not followed procedurally. So if the city council has a whatever holiday fest.
Yeah, it's like Fourth of July stuff.
Park under the new pavilion covering the new basketball court. Then all of that would be reviewed and approved through the city manager by the council. And the planning folks would be issuing an individual temporary permit for an event over the weekend.
And that would be something the city manager would do, like.
Well, yeah, like the Tolan Prophes Festival, none of that went through the Tolan Planning Department. The Chamber of Commerce organizes it and turns in all their application materials to the city. The city manager's office reviews it, the council approves it, all in one fell swoop. That way the organizer, the Chamber of Commerce, knows that they've been contacted by fifteen different or twenty, thirty, forty, fifty vendors of various sorts. And the chamber has figured out, yeah, this one will be there, that one will be somewhere else. And it's all reviewed and approved by the council at once, all the liquor license stuff. And so, uh, I'm kind of thinking if we can hold off on the pod part of it, then we won't have to get into that kind of a big time site development review with standards for how you're going to build a pod and rent out, lease out spaces to various vendors who will stay there for sometimes years on end.
Yeah, fundamentally different, they're not moving.
Yeah, so it kind of raises a question for our regular food truck things. Can a property have just one food truck or two? And then if you go three, you got to have a pod? Or can you have three food trucks and on the fourth one you have to have a pod? So that'll be one of the things that staff will ask the commission for advice on.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it's going to depend on their ingress and ingress and, uh, and parking situation on the property or how many they could actually support.
Yeah, if somebody that's a retailer and they're, you know, making money doing okay, but if they could just lease out a couple of spaces in their extra parking spaces, you know, like one of these places that has more parking than they ever used, well, let's put a couple of food trucks out there where nobody ever uses those spaces. Um, then they can generate, I don't know what, an extra thousand a month or something?
Beautiful.
And, and that's good.
That's tragic.
So, anyway.
Yeah, and they use it to support other places, like it's common for breweries that don't have their own kitchen, have a food truck there or something to support their customers and guys.
Yep. So anyway, that's coming, we don't have any particular schedule for it. But, uh, we'll have to, Brandon and I and Nicole, I guess, will have to talk about what we're going to be. Instead of having two hearings on the nineteenth of June, they're going to have to be some other time. And if we have two hearings in June, then that probably would not be a good night to have a work session on food trucks. Could be a night to introduce and give you information so that the following month, we can talk about food trucks. But anyway, we'll figure that out and let you know what's going on.
Okay. You have any motion to adjourn?
I will be waiting.
Okay, book call.
Commissioner Cherker.
Hi.
Commissioner Vice Chair Belding.
Hi.
Commissioner Miola.
Hi.
Commissioner Rogers.
Hi.
Commissioner Adamson.
Hi.
Commissioner Webb.
Hi.
Meeting adjourned.